Let's call the City of Milton Common Council, meeting to order Wednesday, April fifth, two thousand and twenty-three at six P M. And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting notice was posted on Friday, March thirty-first at Milton Pigly Wiggly, hometown Ace Hardware in Milton City Hall.
And is there a motion to approve the agenda? I just want to warn you guys on this side that this side is on top of it tonight, so good luck. There is a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? We have an agenda, and we have Larry that is volunteering to do the pledge of allegiance. Alright, our next item is public comments regarding items that are listed on the agenda and can be affected by council action. And we have Todd and Marsha Brookhiser, is that correct? Yes, okay, and if you would like to come out to the podium and talk now, or you can wait until your agenda item is called, or you can just say, well, it was just a, just in case we needed to talk. Is it? It's a just in case. Okay, alright, so when we get to that agenda item, if you're a just in case, we'll, we'll call on you. Alright, meeting dedication. So, tonight I am dedicating this meeting to all of the voters, every single voter that came out and voted yesterday, either in the City of Milton or the state of Wisconsin, we had an extremely high voter turnout. So I want to dedicate this meeting to all of those voters, and I also want to dedicate it to all the staff and volunteers that helps run our elections and help them go smoothly. And I can't really say enough about how election after election, everything runs smoothly, the ballots all get counted, everything gets matched up, and democracy goes on, so thank you to everybody, I really appreciate that. And now we will move on to mayoral proclamation. As many of you know, the Milton Youth Coalition is a coalition of community members and youth that have formed to increase awareness and education around substance misuse as one of the things that they're working on. Ashley, is there, and mental health, is that the second one? And this, uh, this month is alcohol awareness a month, so I'm gonna read the proclamation. Whereas excessive alcohol consumption is a serious public health and safety concern in Wisconsin, and whereas a higher percentage of adults in Wisconsin regularly consume alcohol than in most other states, and a higher rate of these regular drinkers consume alcohol excessively, also known as binge drinking, at least once per month when compared to all other states. And whereas consuming alcohol and binge drinking in particular can have a negative impact on individuals' personal life, professional life, and mental and physical health, and can even increase the risk of developing some cancers. And whereas the estimated annual cost of binge drinking to Wisconsin's economy is three point nine billion dollars, which includes costs related to lost productivity, healthcare, and criminal justice. And whereas this occasion presents all Wisconsinites with the opportunity to examine their drinking habits and assess the effects on their overall health and well-being, and to utilize resources available on the Wisconsin Department of Health Services website to learn more. Whereas the Milton Youth Coalition is working together to make a positive difference in the lives of Milton's youth by increasing the number of Milton youth who avoid consuming alcohol before the age of twenty-one. And whereas this month, the state of Wisconsin joins the Wisconsin Department of Health Services in supporting the enforcement of minimum legal drinking age laws, highlighting the resources and support available for folks who need professional help to avoid unhealthy alcohol use, and supporting our friends, family members, and neighbors in recovery. Now therefore I, Anissa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, do hereby proclaim April two thousand and twenty-three as Alcohol Awareness Month throughout the City of Milton, and I commend this observance to all our state's residents. Alright, approval of the consent. All those in favor? Is there anyone opposed? The race is on, alright. Item number eight, discussion and possible action regarding resolution two thousand and twenty-three oh-six. Recognize and honoring alderperson Larry Lane for public service to the City of Milton. Alright, here we go. Whereas Larry Lane respectively served the residents of the City of Milton as alderperson from April two thousand and seventeen through April two thousand and twenty-three. And whereas alderperson Larry Lane's tenure on the City of Milton Common Council coincided with the creation and approval, approval of the two thousand twenty through two thousand twenty-four strategic plan, participated with eleven other municipalities to create the newly expanded fire and EMS district covering two hundred and twenty square miles and twenty-five thousand people in Rock, Dane, and Jefferson to ensure emergency services are available for all community members. And whereas the award of grants to fund the replacement of eighty-one private service lines at no cost to the water utility customers, approval of the urban forestry grant to remove hazardous trees and replace with new to ensure sustainability within the community, along with the adoption of an ordinance to allow bees and chickens that brought additional educational and financial opportunities to the community. And whereas between two thousand seventeen and two thousand and twenty-three, nearly forty percent of the streets within the city had pavement improvements, including rehabilitation and preventative maintenance amounting to nearly thirteen miles of roadway, along with the award of the bipartisan infrastructure law funding to be used for pavement replacement along East High Street, and at the same time significantly reducing the overall debt service. And whereas alderperson Larry Lane participated in an instrumental change to the staff in the hiring of a city engineer, public works director, city treasurer, and city clerk. Whereas alderperson Larry Lane served on the Plan Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission, Public Works Committee, Personnel and Finance Committee, and as an alternate on the Joint Fire Commission. And whereas the City of Milton was well-served by Larry Lane throughout his time as alderperson through the promotion of community involvement and dedication to the community. Now therefore be it resolved, the City of Milton Common Council, on behalf of the entire City of Milton, hereby recognizes and honors Larry Lane for his public service to the community of Milton as alderperson, commends his dedication to the community, thanks him for his active role in many activities, and wishes him well in future endeavors. And is there a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved?
Second.
Any comments?
That's quite a long list. I, I want to say I'm just a small part of it all, you, you all were part of all of that, and I've considered it a great privilege to, it's really been a highlight of my volunteer experience, being with all of you for the last six years and helping the community, so I appreciate the kind words. And when does the roasting start?
I'm waiting, I am waiting, I, because I think Mark has like a whole list of bad dad jokes to go through, so I'll wait. Okay, there is a motion and there is a second. All those in favor say aye? Anyone opposed? That resolution has passed. Discussion and pa- possible action regarding a conditional use permit request for forty-four Second Street.
So Courageous Hearts daycare and preschool facility is looking to operate, open and operate a daycare facility at forty-four Second Street. If you may recall, forty-four Second Street is the former home of the Methodist Church, uh, which was recently purchased and rezoned to be three to allow it to be repurposed to, uh, for a multitude of uses. Within the B-three zone district, daycare is a conditional use permit request. So the applicants who are seated here this evening have made that request with the support of the property owner. Uh, and the Plan Commission held a public hearing earlier today and unanimously forwarded a favorable recommendation to this, for this conditional use permit in this location. And as the applicant did point out, daycare facility was present in this location for several decades until such time that the Methodist Church ceased its operations in that location, and then moved their daycare to the new, uh, locations, so they want to carry on that tradition. I don't want to steal all your thunder, you had a great introduction at the Plan Commission meeting. But with that being said, the Plan Commission and city staff recommend approval of the conditional use permit application. Uh, and if there are questions for staff or for the applicants, we'd be more than happy to field those questions.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the conditional use permit, and I also have a question.
I'll second that.
My question is for the chief. I'm just wondering, do we, I know that you will be keeping an eye on the traffic flow in the area. Um, I'm wondering if you have any concerns about any of the bars and people coming through the neighborhood? And the reason that I ask that is because a few years ago, when I was walking the neighborhood, that was one of the, I, that was what I heard was that we were, I, you probably remember, I think that we brought this up before. So I'm just, I just want to make sure that everything's good. We had, you know, someone who came in after the meeting that had safety concerns with the traffic and the kids, and I'd like your take on that, please, sir.
Yeah, I spoke to a neighbor who, who mentioned the traffic concerns about the width of the street, parking on both sides, what sort of traffic will be caused by the new use of the facility, and that's something that we're going to monitor, I plan on talking to Eric about that, and we can brainstorm on what we can do with the occupants and the people coming and going from there, and maybe where we could direct them to park to help keep the street open. Um, I have zero concerns regarding the bars, I think, while there could be an occasional person stumbling through any of our neighborhoods who has been drinking, there's nothing that jumps to my mind that would prevent this facility being used in the way it's intended.
Any other questions or comments? There is a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
I live staying from voting.
Anyone opposed? Alright, that motion carries. Congratulations. Okay. Present, presentation by TDS Telecommunication. I'll start over. Presentation by TDS Telecommunications Corporation.
Thank you so much for having me today, greatly appreciate it, thank you. So firstly, thank you members for having me today, greatly appreciate it, thank you Mark for hosting us. Was it two weeks back we were here and collaborated with us on our project here, so we greatly appreciate the collaboration from the city, and of course allowing us to be here today to present to you. So the reason why I'm here today is to, one, introduce TDS, uh, two, provide visibility into our fiber project in the City of Milton, um, which when complete will offer the community a new reliable choice for internet, TV, and phone services. Now, TDS plans to invest significant capital, hire local contractors, and conduct, uh, to construct a new network, all of which is self-funded by TDS. I know that's one thing I always like to point out at the beginning because being a city leader, I know one thing that'll be back in, in the back of my mind is, well, what do you need from me and how much is it gonna cost me? So I always like to point out this is self-funded one hundred percent by TDS. Um, uh, we do take grants, we do participate in A-CAN, but this is one hundred percent self-funded by, by TDS here. So in the next few minutes, we'll walk through a high-value overview of who we are, community benefits, construction, and I'll end there with any Q and A that, uh, you guys do have, um, which I definitely appreciate, uh, any questions as well. So without further ado, let's jump right in here. So since our humble beginnings in nineteen sixty-nine, Telephone and Data Systems, or TDS for short, uh, was founded with the goal of, um, a commitment to connecting the world to rural suburban communities. Since TDS, um, humble beginnings, uh, we've grown quite a bit to a Fortune one thousand company. Um, along with that, our products, services, and portfolio has grown quite a bit to, um, include wireless, wireline, I T, marketing products and services through our family to, uh, companies. Now although our service and company has grown quite a bit, we still very much, uh, remain family-owned. We always like to say we're a big little company because simply we're very much a family environment, and the Carlson family is still a majority shareholder in the company. For us, we're gonna be focusing on TDS Telecom, which is our wireline portion of businesses. We're actually headquartered locally in Madison, Wisconsin. Um, we're the seventh largest wire pro- line provider, and offer services in over eleven hundred communities in thirty-four states. This is actually our active service map here. Those light blue states that you see, those are gonna be where we have active services. Those dark blue spots are gonna be our active service cities. Like I mentioned, we focus on those suburban and rural communities across the U S. Now since our inception, we have remained committed to investing, uh, underserved rural suburban communities, and this is what brings us to Milton. Based on our internal research, local focus groups, analysis by our senior leadership, Milton has made it to the top of our list of target cities based on its size, appealing demographics, and being underserved by existing providers. Our goal here is to not only bring new services, but to really help future-proof the community. And what I mean by that is what's two gig today can be eight gig tomorrow, twenty gig the next day. Because once the fiber is in the ground, it scales with demand, simply all that needs to be upgraded is electronics that power that. So once it's in the ground, it's really future-proofing the city. There's no greater example that we saw than the demand it, uh, internet has and the impact it has in our lives was during COVID. Right, we were all at home, our living rooms became the doctor's office, they became the classroom, they became our mobile workstation. And that really put a drain on internet, and it kind of really opened up to say what, uh, the internet can do for our lives and how much we really rely on that. Now with our internet speeds, we're gonna be offering up to eight gig service, up to ten gig for, uh, commercial businesses. To give you an idea, um, that's currently the fastest available speed in the nation. Um, there's only one other provider that offers that eight gig service, and that's Google Fiber. They actually just rolled it out in one market, it's available in all of our markets that we're launching here, our fiber services. So you're gonna have access to the fastest speeds in the nation here. Not only that, we're gonna still offer our, uh, TV and phone service. Our minimum speed when we get in is three hundred mags. The reason why that's important is because it's enough to support an entire household and family. The easiest way to explain it is Netflix, right? Most of us have a streaming service. Netflix recommends a three meg connection for standard stream, five mags for a H D stream. So the easiest way to do the math on that is divide that five by three hundred, and you can see there's enough speed there to support the entire family, stream each show in a separate room. Hopefully it's together in the living room, together as a family, but of course, if that doesn't happen, we'd be able to support the whole family there. Now getting into the construction, I don't want to get ahead of myself, right, because the services are the end result. What's to get there is gonna be construction. Um, this is around a forty-five miles of fiber we'll be deploying. Um, it's bringing online just, uh, just, uh, close to almost was at thirty-one hundred addresses. And we're gonna make a capital investment of, of just shy of three million dollars here. We're actually gonna be starting, uh, this month, and we're looking around an eighteen-month timeline. Now with any construction, it's disruptive, right? So one thing we pride ourselves on is our communication, which is what brings me here today with you. Is the way we construct, build out, communicate our network is what we call a D F N. D F N is a fancy way to say a neighborhood, it stands for digital fiber network. This map here, you can see those different colors and shapes, those are those D F Ns that I was talking about. This is basically how we construct. We set, we, we, sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself, we permit, so we send a, um, permit to Mark, goes approves that, sends it back to us, we'll set our construction communication, letting those neighborhoods know that we're gonna be constructing there. We'll construct, we'll turn up services and then move on to the next D F N. This allows us to systematically work our way through the entire city, which, which, uh, helps. We try not to disrupt any current city projects, neighborhoods, as well as put a strain on any city resources as well. Now getting back to that construction communication, throughout this entire process, we want to keep, uh, you, the residents, in the loop for the entire process. So we put together a very robust communication, uh, system that I'll walk through here with you now, starting with that mailer one. That mailer one since, uh, is sent out around two weeks prior to construction. Communicates three things, at first it wants to give visibility who TDS, what's gonna be happening. Second part of that is education, things like what an easement is, what a public right-of-way is. And the third thing is safety, safe, safety is key, right? We're gonna be doing construction underground, we want to make sure we're not disrupting any existing utilities, any services, or private utilities underground. So one thing we ask is just that everyone is, is takes part of this, may is aware that the yard markings there, the signs there, they're for a reason, they're for your safety, our crew's safety, the community's safety. After that, around one week prior to construction, we send out this beautiful highlighted yellow postcard. It's, it's really hard to miss, there's nothing for you to open, it's around a, say a six by, a six by four inch postcard, it's pretty big, it sticks out in the mail. Again, we want to provide visibility so residents, businesses, the community knows what's going on, what to expect. Around the day of construction, we'll go door-to-door with those little door hangers there that you see in the top right corner. Again, very hard to miss, we just want to be, um, let residents know and cognizant that we will be there and let them know what's going on. Anytime we do have crews on the ground, we'll put up these sandwich boards, again, just let them know what's going on. And it provides accountability for TDS, let them know, if you do have any questions, please hold TDS accountable. And on all these communications, there's a one eight five five number on there too as well. Now, when I mentioned a one eight five five, number one eight hundred number, I know one of the things that you're probably thinking is, well, how long am I gonna sit on hold? How long are my constituents gonna sit on hold? When people call it, there's two options, sales and construction. Hit number two, construction, you're gonna be connected with live local representative in less than two minutes. We actually pride ourselves on maintaining a whole time of less than two minutes. Through the triage line, you can get answers to any questions, whether as small, as simple as it will be, all the way up to putting in a ticket for restoration or anything else that may have come up. We want to make sure those tickets are resolved and escalated and taken care of, handled. So we actually do have this triage service set up with S L A's or service level agreements that our contractors must respond to those tickets by. Um, and not only that, one of the biggest things that always comes up and I have questions about is restoration. It's one of the biggest things we kind of see there. Is if a, uh, a resident calls in with a restoration ticket issue, and they basically say, hey, there, there's, you know, disturbed grass, my garden was disturbed, what's gonna happen is they call and they put in that ticket, that kick, ticket goes out to our construction team. They'll go out there, take note of the situation, um, they'll make an effort to close it, take out, do any restoration, uh, repair that to either condition that it was prior to construction or better condition. Our triage center will actually call the customer back to confirm it's up to their standards. If it's not, we kick that ticket right back, and we continue to do that until that is properly resolved up to that resident's standard. Now getting back to the communication, um, and the restoration piece, anytime we do disturb some soft surface here, we will put these yard signs in. Um, I know sometimes the wind does take them away, and people just kind of take them out of the yard, but we'll put those up anytime we do disturb soft surface, just again, letting residents know we're totally cognizant, hey, we disturbed this area, we're gonna get it repaired and fixed in a timely manner, but again, if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to give us a call. Another resource, I know, understand a lot of people don't like to call, or they feel they're gonna sit on hold. We also do have a great website available. Provides all the information from the mailers, even have some great YouTube videos on there, provides some additional details about the construction process. One of my favorite features on there is, um, your address. It allows you to type in your home address, get a actual, uh, real-time D F N map of the area. It will provide updates on where we are in construction, and when we're expected to come to your area. Again, just another level of communication and visibility into the project. Now, I'll end with this, um, is fiber services is not all that we do. When we come into a community, we're there to grow with it and support the community. Across the nation, we support the community in its growth from, um, uh, contributions, volunteering, in-market support. If there's probably gonna be a local event, you're gonna see us there being involved in the community. So we greatly appreciate your time and openness, um, and welcoming us to the community here, and we look forward to continue collaborating with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council?
I guess I have a question, what the installation would look like? Uh, like, is it topically, like, do you dig down, or are you gonna directionally bore? In that, in residential, maybe different than commercial where you have all sidewalks, so.
Yeah, great question. So with most of our builds, we're gonna focus on underground, um, boring. Uh, when it's available, we'll utilize, uh, utility poles that are currently in place for aerial. When it comes to actually connecting the customers or putting in a service drop for them, we'll either utilize what's there. If there's a telephone pole, uh, currently serving that house through like your cable, uh, services, we'll utilize that pole. Um, most of the cases, we do like to go underground. Thank you.
Anything else from anyone?
We have a lot of new subdivisions coming in the city, how quick do you think that those subdivisions could be taken care of?
Uh, is it for a, a new construction? So we participate, uh, we have basic partnerships with all the, uh, power companies throughout the state, throughout the nation, when we, uh, participate in what we call joint use. And basically what that means is when the power company, gas companies putting in their lines, they already have the ground torn open, there's already a trench there for us, so we'll basically lay our conduit with that to ensure that those, uh, new developments do have services available as well.
What part of the city are you thinking of starting in? I saw your map, but I saw the colors and stuff, I was wondering, should we add, specifically the part of the city you're looking at starting at?
Um, I don't, I can get you back on that, I don't want to ad lib and tell you that we're starting in the wrong location. So I can definitely send you a follow-up, or I can send that over to Mark, and hopefully he can get that to you.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
Anything else for anyone? Alright.
And just a selfish, uh, uh, plug here for our services. If you guys are interested, addresses are loaded in there, so if you're taking, wanting to just take a peek at what pricing, what service may be available for you there, you can go ahead and put your address in there, just take a look at what services are coming to your town.
And that'll be like in about eighteen months?
Uh, depends, is, because we work through the systematic process there, as soon as we're done with the area, you can start getting services, you don't have to wait until the entire city is done.
Do you send out a notification when that ser- when that area is hooked up?
Yeah, typically around, um, sixteen, ninety days before we call turn up, actually turning up services for that newly constructed area, you'll start seeing flyers, mailers, we'll also have a door-to-door team that will come by. Um, and one thing great about what we call the pre-registration process is some really great offers, like the free installation, great deals on, on services there as well, so we'll definitely make sure you're aware there.
One more question.
Um do you anticipate, once you have your infrastructure in place in a community like Milton or other communities, do you anticipate providing service to the future to outlying around the city?
Definitely, that's a really good question, um as I mentioned, we wanna grow with the community, so if there are what we virtue as like edge-out opportunities, um yes, definitely, we'll take advantage of those.
Anything else for anyone? Alright, thank you very much. Good luck. Alright, our next agenda item is discussion and possible action regarding ordinance five ten and resolution two twenty-three oh seven college street parking amendments.
So as you may recall, a few weeks ago, we had a discussion uh regarding some requests in the downtown, the Parkview side of town. Uh specifically related to College Street, there was a lot of discussion about the business-only parking. But ultimately, that boiled down to the request from the business owners uh that had contacted the city. There was a ten-minute parking only or ten-minute only parking sign that was uh really kind of connected to the former business that was in operation there. The current business owners have uh communicated with the city that they would like to see that ten-minute uh restriction removed and have that returned to just a uh regular old-fashioned business parking only. Uh so in discussion with legal counsel, uh that required an ordinance and a and resolution to make that change. So ordinance uh five ten and resolution twenty-two-three oh seven uh effectuate those changes.
Any questions?
I think we pretty much discussed it last week, last, uh two weeks ago.
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number five-ten regulating parking on Parkview Drive in College Street. Oh, it's, okay, sorry. Makes uh the motion is to approve the first reading, waive the second and pass. Third, yes, that's it.
I just hope this site gets their head together. But a better replacement is here. My look is not sufficient, clearly. There is a motion and a second and lots of stuff in between, but all those in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose? See, this is why it's fun to be an elected official and go through a campaign for.
I would move approval of resolution twenty-two-three oh seven.
There's a motion and a second regarding resolution two twenty-three oh seven, all those in favor? You wanna oppose? That motion carries, so I guess Larry's just gonna have to make all the motions on the next items. And there are exciting things like sidewalk grinding, so. Discussion and possible action regarding sidewalk grinding.
Um this is to approve the contract for Safe Step LLC, they are the vendor that has provided sidewalk grinding for the city um in the past and has provided a proposal for a list of areas that's um public work staff has located and marked. Uh the total amount in the proposal is nine thousand eight hundred thirty-five dollars and eleven cents. They also provided an additional per-unit price of twenty-five dollars per linear foot for any work that may be found or need to be added since the uh list was prepared by public work staff. The funding would come out of the general fund budget for the street maintenance and construction. City administration recommends approving the contract with Safe Step LLC for sidewalk grinding.
Move for approval of the proposal.
Second.
There's motion and a second, any questions or comments?
I I have a question, um I was just wondering, what's the longevity of, you know, once we start shaving these, where does that put that on our repair list?
We we try not to shave, you know, sidewalks are four inches thick, so at some point, you're you're right, it's gonna be more effective to replace the sidewalk, so. Uh for example, with this maintenance work, we prepared a list of sidewalk replacement and sidewalk grinding, the grinding are um not as severe defects that we can repair. There is a possibility, you know, over time again, that it's gonna shift or move and additional repair work is needed and you you know, it whether or not it can be ground again, that would have to be determined at that time and it may need to be replaced.
Larry?
It's related, but maybe slightly different, so the just uh for edification of the community and myself. The decision to grind is based on the condition of the pavement, of the pavement, right, of the concrete itself, correct?
Yeah, so ba- basically, um looking at the joint to see how um li- like what the uh amount of changes from one square of concrete to the next.
And the and the reason I asked that a couple, uh I really got caught off guard, a couple citizens asked me, well, how do you know when you do grinding versus replacement and and I said, well, I'll make sure we discuss that.
Yeah, there's, I mean, if the sidewalk was, he, you know, so that you had to grind, you know, half the thickness of the sidewalk, that's not gonna make sense, but there is some judgment involved with staff making the decision as to what's ground and what's replaced.
This is coming out of our what budget?
Uh it's the street maintenance, it's in the um it's included as sidewalk repairs.
And how much do we have, could, does anybody know how much we have designated for sidewalk repairs?
I believe that's twenty-five thousand.
Thank you.
Anything else for anyone? There's a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye. You wanna oppose? Alright, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding purchase of police department copier, now I just want everybody to know that we wanted to get a Roomba for the carpet and Chief Barcourt was like, no, I need a copier. So we tried to like smooth up to DPW because they do our vacuuming and we couldn't do it, so.
Can the Roomba print color copies of crime scenes?
Well, I'm sure we can have somebody create a Roomba like that.
So we've um we've been struggling with our copy machine for about a year now. And um it's getting to the point where replacement is really necessary for the work that we need to do in the police department. We have not had a color copier um to this point, City Hall has a color copier, so when necessary, we've been pushing. When we need to print for color, we've been pushing to that copy machine. Um and again, as I jokingly alluded to, but it is a serious thing, that sometimes we have evidence pictures that we need to have color copies of. And having as as much as I trust city staff, just implicitly, that having digital evidence being on the other side of the building from our secure police department makes me a little uncomfortable and runs up against some federal guidelines that I'm not so sure I wanna uh fight, so. Um this, uh we've met with Gordon Flesh, with my staff and Jenny, went through the previous contracts and decided that the choice in front of you tonight is the most economical and the most efficient choice for my staff on my side of the building and would ask that you approve the expenditure tonight.
Questions?
I'll make the motion to approve the uh purchase of the new um printer. Second.
Forget it. There's a motion and a second from the right.
There's still a motion you can make.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Anyone oppose? Why we had a vacuum of so much in here too? Alright, congratulations on the new copier. Committee reports. Staff reports. Okay, Jenny wants to go first.
Okay, my big news is the election went well yesterday, uh so we had fifty-two-point-four percent voter turnout, which was amazing and everything was very steady, we had no more than pretty much eight minutes for people to come in and out, um so I wanna thank election officials, Department of Public Works, any of the staff that helped with it, it again, it went really well. Uh most of our election officials were out about nine fifteen, um with the last election officials, chief election inspectors, excuse me, it was about probably nine forty. Um so that is really awesome and I'm looking forward to a little time off between our next election, our next election won't be until possibly February of next year. Um and as far as the rest of the department clerks area is now where you're switching over to, we're starting to work on renewals for alcohol licenses, so those will expire June thirtieth, so be middle of June, though we'll be seeing those come through um at council.
Okay, library?
Um we had a very, very busy week last week, we had over two hundred kids participate in a pop-up scavenger hunt that we had. And um Ashley and I are working on a really exciting thing, uh we received a small grant and we're going to give community members the option to text with the birds that we have in our archway, in our story gardens archway. And each bird will, one will tell Milton history facts, one will tell jokes and one will tell like literacy facts, so we're working on that.
So like that could be a team-building exercise for the council, like we can work that in somehow. Larry's just gonna come in for team building. They should be able to text Mark directly. Chief?
I'll just publicly admit that the library's Facebook post was the only April Fools joke I fell for. Um and it got me, so, yeah. I had to read it to the end, but it got me. Um I wanna tell you all about a program that I'm pretty um honored to be a part of, I promise I'm not patting myself on the back. Um but uh you know, peer support is something that's um pretty passionate for me. It's something that our organizations in public safety, specifically law enforcement, have been working on for years and we've done a great job at developing peer support programs within our department, including ours and throughout the region. And most of that peer support is done officers helping officers. Within the last probably six months to a year, there's been a recognition that when people who aren't police officers and are at senior levels of organizations, who do they reach out to? They aren't really going to reach out to the lower levels of their own organization if they need peer support. So the Wisconsin Law Enforcement Death Response Team, which has been a team up and running for several years now, has developed an executive peer support program that's made up of chiefs, sheriffs, lieutenants, commanders at the State Patrol, DOJ. Um and I was thrilled to be selected as one of thirty-one people to do that, so um throughout Wisconsin, anytime somebody needs support from somebody who not only gets it from a um from a public safety peer perspective, but also for a leadership perspective, now we have people that we can talk to as well. So pretty happy about that and wanted to let you know that was a part of what we're working on.
Thank you, that is so cool.
Um just quick, we started the conversations with Gov HR for the police chief recruitment. Unfortunately, um Scott has not changed his mind on retiring in uh in November of this year. So we are starting those conversations, April eleventh, um we're going to have the consultants on site, they're going to be meeting with the leadership team, police department staff and some various community stakeholders as they start to develop the different recruitment materials for the position. And they'll also be meeting with the police commission that night.
Thank you. Mark?
I don't have anything.
Okay, does Kelsey have anything? I can't see her there, is she wearing the invisible cloak tonight?
Kelsey's out bowling in Reno, Nevada. There's national bowling championship or whatever, I don't know what you call it.
So she's bringing home a trophy, right, that's what we're anticipating.
I assume so. No real update on my end, uh uh beyond what Jenny, I echo Jenny's comments, we have some amazing poll workers. I don't know how many elections I've been a part of now, probably close to a hundred in my career. No, maybe not, maybe like seventy, um and they're just an amazing group. They're so friendly and so thoughtful and um you know, really, they're just great people, really lucky.
Yes, we totally are, Jenny, I I'm gonna add a little bit. So with our election officials, we had a little, a a a small training prior to the election. Um and it's something I'm gonna be doing from going forward, is is so there's quite a few of these people now, again, have been here for two years that I see at elections and some of the trainings that Lisa Tolson, the Rock County Clerk is puts on. But not really an informal time where people are able to just ask questions rather than having a structured format. Uh so this is something we're going to be doing of in the future and continuing and it re- went really well where it's, you know, maybe about an hour, we have some refreshments, people are asking questions and it was really, really nice to see how interested they are and I put a little plug in because of the fact that we have our new election cycle coming up of next year, so we need to re-appoint people for the election officials and we had of those people that came, we had fifty percent that signed up right then and there. So again, we won't have that on the council agenda until um until roughly November, but that was really, really awesome that people already are thinking that, hey, I wanna be a part of it, so.
That's super exciting. And I couldn't be more proud of our voter turnout. Again, so our next meeting date is uh April eighteenth, we will have swearing, a lot of swearing. Lot of swearing in. At least, at least, so um watch for that on YouTube, that's exciting. And um I don't have anything else, so if you guys wanna leave, Larry, it's all you.
I'm caught off guard, I don't usually get to motion to adjourn, so let's go. Uh motion to adjourn.
I just don't even wanna do it. Okay, a motion to adjourn, thank you Larry again, all those in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose? Do we need a roll call vote, do I need to break a tie? Okay, I have totally lost control of the council, so we're clearly adjourned. Thank you, Larry.